thirty seconds behind or ahead I'm sorry. All right, welcome everybody to the agenda of the special meeting of the city of Coachella. City Council, the council sitting as a Coachella sanitary district. Coachella Fire Protection District, Coachella Finance and Authority, Coachella Education and Government Access Cable Channel Corporation. Coachella Water Authority and its accessory agency to the Coachella redevelopment agency and the Coachella Parks and Recreation. As I think we're gonna call it district, uh welcome again, this is our special meeting. I'm gonna ask that our clerk note for the record, the attendance, we did get a notice that. Mayor Potemco Larsa will not be in attendance, so this is our council. With that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Uh are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Uh can I get a motion to accept the agenda as written?
All motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes, any abstentions? Motion carries, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance and I'm gonna ask for the city manager if you can lead us in the budget. There are no proclamations or presentations, are there any written communications? Now, clerk?
Uh we have one. And it is from Polte Group. And responds to the Negociant family request.
Yes, and then we should have, everyone should have a letter from.
Oh, I'm sorry, and yeah, there's another one for the Negocian Ranch.
Yeah, there is, there is one from the Negocian Ranch and then one from Polte Group in response. Thank you. Move on to the consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar, we'll move on to new business, there are no new business. We'll move on to public hearings, and this is Sevilla project number two, project, and this is a proposed change of zone. Number twenty-two dash zero five intended to track map number thirty-eight five five seven. Additional use permit number three seventy-two, architectural review number twenty-three dash thirteen. Street names and environmental assessment number twenty-two dash zero six. That's a proposal to subdivide thirty-nine. Uh acres into two hundred and four single-family lots with a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. With three single-family residential projects. Product produ- production model homes with three elevation options located on. Van Buren, south of Avenue fifty, north of Avenue fifty-one. Uh Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city councils, Gabriel Bettis, your development services director. Uh so this item today, um. We do have the property owner that's here, uh Mr. Negocian. Um that is here with us and for the item tonight, uh but we learned some history that relates to. To the letters that were provided to the city council, so we had have a short clip of some of the history that took place on that property. From a nineteen forty-four movie regarding uh what was Crop Core, which was um. Occurring during the war times in nineteen forty-four, so we'll go into that first and then we'll start off presentation on the project. So there is some history to the property, um and we'll go into that presentation. But I'm gonna pass on the presentation to Ron Goldman and he's our consultant planner for this project.
Well, thank you.
I think they filmed that in the middle of August, right, Ron? But that's, it just shows the progression of global warming.
Yeah, it shows a lot of happy people picking uh dates, yes, yes. Very interesting, um yeah, Mr. Negocian sent a letter to the council. And it caused me yesterday to do a lot of research on the site and on that movie, and quite interesting the history of. Of the site and also the crop core, so yeah. I learned a lot of interesting facts yesterday as I was prepared for the meeting. This is the uh Sevilla two project, my name is Ron Goldman, I am consultant for the city, been working on this project for the past year. And it is a change of zone, it is a conditional use permit, an architectural review, tentative track map. Environmental assessment, it's proposing two hundred and four lot single-family home development. One acre park, one point three seven acre retention basin. It's on thirty-nine acres and the applicant is the Polte Group. So the project site is located south of Avenue fifty, north of Avenue fifty-one, west of Van Buren Street. It's a thirty-nine acre site, it's currently has one residence and five outbuildings. And I've learned this evening, it also has a very old railroad car on the site. Again, Pyramid Date Gardens was on the site for about sixty-five years, it's been in agriculture for almost a hundred years. It's been followed for the last couple of years. And the the name of the movie was Song of the Open Road, that's the clip you saw, starting Jane Powell. Edgar Bergen and W C Fields, very, very interesting history. Again, change of zone is proposing a change for the general neighborhood zone to a general neighborhood with a plan unit development overlay. Attended to track map three eight five five seven, it's a subdivision of two parcels, it's two hundred and four single-family lots. With minimum lots as a five thousand square feet, a one acre neighborhood park, one point three seven acre retention basin. And a quarter acre future dedicated well site. The uh project comes out to about seven point seven dwelling units per acre, which is within the general plan. Uh general neighborhood landies designation. The C U P is a plan unit development overlay pursuant to section seventeen point thirty-eight of the municipal code. Architectural review twenty-three thirteen provides for the review of the proposed elevations, I'm gonna get those. Into those in just a minute, the floor plans and landscaping, and the environmental assessment was done to analyze the. Possible environmental impacts from the proposed project. Couple onsite photographs showing the general nature of the site, you can see it is extremely flat. And it is vacant except for the one residence and the um. And the warehouses, I believe that's the boxcar in the lower right-hand photograph. General plan again, general neighborhood, seven to twenty-five D U S per acre, proposal. Uh project comes in seven point seven, you can see from the slide. That to the north is general neighborhood and also neighborhood commercial, same to the south. And to the west of the site, portion of the site is adjacent to Riverside County and that zoning and general plan is agriculture. Zoning on the site is general neighborhood and proposed zoning is general neighborhood plan unit development. This is the proposed tentative track map, you can see there's an area on the east side adjacent to the Amburran with some red outlines. Those, those were some changes that the applicant made in the last week or so. And that was in response to some fire department issues regarding the size, the width of the uh two neighborhood entries. You can see there's a neighborhood entry on the north side and on the south side of the project adjacent to the Amburran. Those needed to be widened in accordance with fire department policies. This is the uh. Site plotting for the development, there are three proposed uh product types. Plan one is shown in ten, sixty-eight homes. Plan two showed a green, sixty-eight homes, plan three shown in blue, again sixty-eight homes, so it's evenly divided into. A third, a third and a third with each plan type. So plan one is a one-story, three-bedroom, two-bath, it's got nineteen hundred and fifty-nine square feet. Plan two is a two-story, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, twenty-four hundred and four square feet. Plan three, two-story, five-bedroom, three-bath with twenty-eight, twenty-four square feet. All of the elevations include exterior stucco, concrete tile, garage door windows are optional, scored accents, recessed lighting, coach lighting. Panel front door and garage door. Again, a little more detail on the uh elevations on the plan one. Again, um the P U D overlay will allow the. A setback to be reduced from twenty feet to fifteen feet in the rear yards. And there are only thirty homes that need those uh setback reductions. And the P U D standards allow for that reduction from twenty feet to fifteen feet. Plan two, again, twenty-four hundred and four square feet, three different elevations. And plan three, it's a two-story, five-bedroom, three-bath, twenty-eight, twenty-four square feet of floor area. Again, all total, there is nine elevations proposed, which meets the residential design standards that the council recently adopted. This is the uh cross-section of project everyways, again. The area on the right outlined in red shows the uh changes that were made. Um on the original tentative map, the um entryways were fourteen feet wide. Fire department came back kind of at the last minute and said, one of those needed to be twenty-four feet and the other could be fourteen feet. The applicant's gone further and both those driveways are now twenty-four feet. Uh of improvement on both the north and the south entryways, you can see a cross-section on the left-hand side. Um the entryway has a six-foot median, planted median, and there's also two proposed medians in Van Buren that are going to be constructed. We went a little bit further than we've done on Van Buren Street, we've increased the right-of-way from ninety-four feet to ninety-nine feet. There'll be a thirteen-foot parkway, it includes a sixty, a six-foot sidewalk against landscaping. Along with a ten-foot multi-purpose trail and a split rail fence, and again, two landscape medians will be constructed within Van Buren Street. There will be an entryway side each of the uh driveways. And the entire project includes a block fencing along Van Buren Street and within all the interior lots. Uh each of the front yards will be landscaped according to the plan on the left. And the plant pallets proposed is on the right-hand side, again, it'll be typical desert landscaping with a. Acacia desert willow, large medium and small shrubs along with ground cover. This is a uh layout of the proposed neighborhood park, again, it's one acre in size, it'll be maintained by landscape lighting district. Includes half basketball, lawn area, picnic tables, top, hot desert garden. And we conditioned that the project will be constructed prior to issuance of the one hundred first occupancy permit. So just about halfway into the project, the park will be completed. This is the uh retention basin, again, it's going to be planted with desert landscaping, trees, shrubs, ground cover, hardscape. And uh Arizona River Rock. The environmental assessment was done for E H twenty-two zero six, found most of the uh impacts to be not significant. Few required mitigation, those are the ones on the right-hand side, biological resources, cultural geology and soils. Hazards, hazardous materials and tribal cultural resources. Again, um we set the environmental assessment out for a thirty-day public review period. From September fifth to October fifth, we got six comment letters, Agrocolic Bente sent two. I I D sent a letter to our Efficient Wildlife, California Water Control Quality Board and the Morongo Abandon Mission Indians. Responses to the comments received have been repaired and we've got a mitigation monitoring or reporting program that's part of the uh. Agenda tonight. We have a few changes that we'd like to make, um again, we received a letter from Mr. Negocian. Uh last couple of days requesting that the family legacy be represented through the street names. And Polte has agreed to that change, the northern property entryway, you can see it on the right, will be called Negocian Way. And then the southern entryway will be called Pyramid Ranch Tribe. So that's to honor the uh history of the property as Gabriel showed that clip later, earlier. And also uh in keeping with what's happened for the last hundred years on the property. Uh at the planning commission, we heard testimony and discussion regarding the need for sidewalk to the Coral Mountain School. You can see on the exhibit, the project site, kind of on the upper portion of the project. And then adjacent to the south is a date palm grove. Um and there was discussion about the need to continue the sidewalk from the southern property line long Van Buren Street to Avenue fifty-one. The uh city engineer has crafted a condition that requires that uh asphalt curb be uh installed. On that portion of Van Buren that right-of-way exists, and that's a condition that we've added to uh. Condition report thirty-one G, so hassle curb will be. Installed along that area and also a concrete six-foot wide walkway. So that will connect the uh project site to fifty-first street, the city engineer is also required. An ADA compliant driveway at fifty-first along with a crosswalk, and again, that's to get people um off the street, off the parkway. And uh facilitate better access to Coral Mountain. Um the applicant has sent the letter to the council requesting a change to condition seventy-five. And that was regarding the C C N Rs, there was discussion with the commission regarding um short-term rentals. And how this project might deal with that. Polte has a standard requirement in their C C N Rs, the. Pulte has a standard requirement in their C C N Rs that prohibits short term rentals, anything less than thirty days. The uh commission went a little bit further. They added the city as a beneficiary to the C C N Rs. And they also requested that um the condition that be written that they could not have any short term rentals two years after the final occupancy is issued for the track map, the C U P and the architectural review. The applicant Pulte would like the areas that's high um struck through, deleted from the um conditions of approval. Staff does not occur concur with that request. We think that condition needs to be in there. Um, absent a change to the council for the city's short term rental ordinance, which is not planned, you think that needs to be in there. Recommendation is to adopt resolution two thousand twenty three dash seventy one, adopting mitigated negative declaration, E H twenty two or six. Proving the track map three eight five five seven, C U P three seventy two, architectural review twenty three thirteen and street names with inclusion in Negosian way with street A, Pyramid Ranch Drive, Street B and the addition of condition approval thirty nine one G. And introduced for first reading by title only ordinance twelve oh eight, ordinance of the city of Coachella proving changes on twenty two oh five. Changes the existing general neighborhood zone to add the plan unit overlay provision to section seventeen point three eight that we missed. That would complete my important review of any questions. You go ahead and open while we're carrying a six seventeen. Is there anyone in the audience like to address the city council? I'm the one coming forward. You get to introduce yourself.
Good evening, uh Mayor Hernandez and council members. My name is David DeWigley with Pulte Homes. Um, just wanted to uh just kind of give a little history of uh Pulte in the desert. Pulte has a thirty year track record in the Coachella Valley with approximately nine ninety three hundred homes. A majority of those homes have been age restricted or or Del Webb communities. Uh, our first traditional home community started here in the city of Coachella with the Valencia project and then moved on to Sevilla one and currently we're working on Belisima. Um, those communities have provided two hundred and sixty seven homes to current and future home buyers. Uh, Sevilla two, if approved, will be an additional two hundred and four homes, which will bring that number up to four hundred and seventy one homes built here in the city of Coachella. We've had much success in providing traditional and first time home buyer homes in the city and continue to evaluate future acquisitions. Uh, the city staff, uh, Doc, uh, Doc, Dr. Martin, Director Perez, Director Simmons, the support staff has been great to work with. Um, you know, we look forward to more years of relationship. And I just want to, you know, if you guys have any questions.
David, you go over the short term rental. That condition that the planning commission was talking about.
Yes, uh, certainly council member. Um, the short term rental discussion has been something that's been brought up by the planning commission in the past. I know it's also been brought up by the city council. So they were concerned about um possibility that um that's like speculators or LLCs would purchase these homes for the purpose of short term rental. Right? Therefore, potentially pricing out first time home buyers, families from being able to buy these homes. And short of having a short term rental ordinance that would limit that, they thought that addressing this through the C C N Rs would be a way to deal with it specifically for this project. Uh, so what Mr. Goldman talked about earlier was that Pulte usually has C C N Rs on their projects, but they're the only signatory on those projects. So they already prohibit short term rentals, but because the city is not a signatory to the C C N Rs, like we don't record our name or sign. You know, uh, Dr. Martin or the mayor doesn't sign the document. Um, it's difficult for us to enforce it. So it's more of a document between property owner to property owner. So in this case, because the planning commission has that particular concern, there is a way to uh enforce some limitations on short term rentals uh through the C C N Rs and it would just apply to this project. Now, the timeframe that the planning commission was comfortable with was two years from the close of the project. We don't know when the project would close and I'm not sure if the applicant knows. A lot of times that depends on the market. Sometimes we have projects that didn't close, right? The stress subdivisions. Um, but let's say a project typically closes in three years, right? So in that case, it would be two years from that point. So um, so that would be the earliest someone would be able to get a short term rental permit. I believe the planning commission thought that that would prevent speculators from buying the home just for that purpose.
I I would like to make a comment on that. If uh I do appreciate the planning commission's uh recommendation or request to uh address the short term rental issue. I just wanted to give counsel an update on what we're doing on staff level. We started a short term rental task force similar what the what we did the cannabis one. We brought different items in front of the council like taxation, policy, the social equity program. We're going to do that along with short term rentals right now. We're asking for a little more time to get the the policy discussion, to do our analysis on what the cities are doing, to talk about revenue generation from short term rentals and how it impacts the city. So we would like to move forward with that exercise and bring something forward to council in the next four or five months. Uh, it doesn't make sense for me to have this uh this development have one set of regulations with short term rentals while citywide, it's something different. I would like to have something installed, uh implemented and approved by the city council. So we can do it citywide. So I wouldn't recommend the planning commission's recommendation, even though it's noble and makes sense because we do want to address that issue, but I'd rather it be done at a later time citywide with the direction of the city council and feedback from the city council before we start restricting individual developments.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Gabe. Yeah, it's just I I was curious to know um a little bit more of this condition. I think we've talked, you know, previously on council of the importance of housing and accessibility and ensuring that our community has access to being able to purchase a home. And so I can understand where they're coming from of, you know, this um fear of, okay, we have more housing and more home development, but will it be accessible to the community that lives here, to the folks that already live here? So I I like that approach. I think it's important that we really do as a city look at that and I know that there are other cities that are adopting their own ordinances when it comes to S T Rs. Um, but I think it would be important for us to do the same, to really focus on it and to be able to apply it citywide. I think that makes sense rather than focusing on just, you know, projects at a time. Um, hopefully we can get that, you know, maybe a study session or something on our agenda soon rather than later. Um, because I think it's, and this is a conversation you and I have had during our meetings. It's it's a concern. I think a lot of folks have too is, you know, we are welcoming so much development and we love to see that in our city, but also we want to make sure that the community that lives here is able to stay and to live here. So, thank you.
Yeah, a question uh for Gabriel, Gabriel. What was the uh intent with the condition? Um, is there a trend or is there something that they're seeing that we're not aware of as a city council? As to why they wanted to vote this way?
Um, yeah, the the example that that's been brought up is Sevilla. Uh, you know, I think even a couple of the commissioners live in that element. So they've observed that a large uh percentage of the homes in that community um are short term rentals, right? And uh, and so just I think that concern that a substantial amount of homes would be dedicated to short term rentals and not individual families. Uh, that's been the project that was brought up specifically. Um, but uh, there might be other projects that are concerned to them.
Yeah, I actually I was reading through the conditions and this condition in particular, and I thought it was smart the way they approached it. Um, it allows the city to be part of the C C N Rs thereby allowing the city to essentially check itself or be in the process of within those communities to to check the homeowners. And I I think, you know, and looking at this condition, I I think it's a start. And what I would suggest is that that we don't take away the planning commission's condition, rather we add an additional condition uh condition that says that this pro this this project will be subject to whatever it is the city council decides to do. So in the event that in, I don't know, call it a year from now, we finally get an ordinance or a year and a half, whatever the timeframe is, then this project would be subject to whatever the city councils ordinance is. And thereby leaving the condition in place until the city council can actually get uh kind of a movement on it. And uh, I I heard from a couple of the commissioners that that their intent was really to ensure that that as phase one starts uh that it all of a sudden doesn't go just hypothetically from four fifty and then you have phase one starts and fifty units uh gets sold and then, you know, twenty five of them go to investors. And, you know, now phase two is five hundred and fifty thousand just because it just came like so they dropped like the 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 investors driving unit costs or you're driving the cost of the units up. So I think it's kind of smart in terms of saying, hey, we want a neighborhood. We don't want, you know, hotel association here and and trying to maintain that balance. And I I I think that's a, it's a, it's a decent approach. It's a good approach to ensure that we can get first time home buyers in, working with Pulte. I think one of the things we should do as well. And this is a question with Selena and everyone else is try to tie in first time home buyer programs to these these communities. And then whatever it is that the the city does decides, this project will be subject to Coachella's new ordinance. That way, we don't, we don't punish the punish the planning commission for their work or they don't get mad at us. Just just add an additional condition and say, hey, this project will be subject to whatever the the planning commission. Now, it'd be interesting to know as well, what is Pulte's home C C N Rs? It, so it sounds like they don't allow C C N Rs. Or I'm sorry, uh, uh, short term home rentals within their C C N Rs. Is that correct?
Yeah. So for the C C N Rs for Sevilla and Belisima, it states that short term rentals, like for a period of thirty days are not permitted. Um, but in those C C N Rs, we're not a party to them, right? And so this is, you know, good informational to know too, right? Do we want to start being a party to future C C N Rs for projects? In this case, there's an opportunity to do that. And then do we want to be able to enforce those C C N Rs in the community on the individual basis? Um, but currently in the way their C C N Rs are written, it's prohibitive. So the only way that it could be enforced, if we're not a party to it, is if a property owner within it takes that a civil case with another property owner.
And now what does being a party to it, that allows us to well, we're grinding the permits and saying, hey, your C C R says you can't have them and have have any in this neighborhood. Subject to whatever the city figures out. So I mean, I I I like the approach of just adding an additional condition, subject to whatever the city figures out. If we figure out a percentage, right? I mean, because I think that's there's a few models, right? Where some cities are saying, hey, in any given community, uh twenty percent can be available or ten percent. Well, then this project would be subject to that too. And I the onus would be on us to actually get that one done sooner than later. That way it doesn't affect us to this two year period within what this condition is calling. So I I I I would move to that that we add a condition on this project. You know, that uh in terms of that that this project would be subject to whatever you ordinance. Uh, the city works out with 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 uh short term rentals. And then that would that would allow the developer to move forward, whatever they're going to do. But it means it means the technical criteria that we want to.
Okay. If you were to add that condition, so you're saying maintaining the existing language of the condition, but adding it, the city updates its ordinance and that's an effect.
I would break you. I'll keep the same in the same condition. That way it references that superseded to that. Otherwise, you can have conflicting conditions.
What the language now on what that looks like, Carlos, like is a uh, I know Mr. Goldman was able to drop some language to add to condition seventy five. So at the end of condition seventy five, which is related to the short term rental limitation in the C C N Rs, that it would have a comma at the end and say unless superseded by an update to the city of Coachella's short term rental ordinance. So that's that's what the council elected to make that modification.
That would be my suggestion of how we look at this.
Gabriel, if um if the um developments um don't allow short term rentals the way the existing language, it it doesn't allow it, right? Then why oppose it? And why oppose the planning commission's recommendation if they can't move forward regardless?
That would be more question for the applicant. Um, just my thoughts around it is the way it is right now, we can't really enforce it because we're not a party to it, right? And so I think they might know that we can't enforce it. We would still issue permits in those communities, but the applicant may want to speak to that too.
Yeah, I think I think that's what my thoughts are, is that it's prohibitive, but it's not enforced. And obviously this language then puts some type of enforcement in there. You know, but I guess for me is that if the language is already there with the intent to not have short term rentals to begin with, you know, then then why is, I can understand why the applicant is is opposing it, but why is staff opposing it? If in the language, it already says that short term rentals cannot be in operation there. Then why, and I get it from the applicant's angle why they would be opposing it, but why is city staff opposing it?
We're opposing the, I'm, I the staff recommended, I I recommended not to do it because I don't want to put the restriction on one unit and what city why it's allowed. Uh, you know, that was just the concept of what we wanted to go. We want to present a a holistic ordinance to the city council on S T Rs and, you know, we will do that within the next hopefully four or five months. Uh, do a study session and bring those items forward. And during that time, council can give us directional, but which options they want to go with. So we can implement a uh citywide S T R. I don't think this development should be restricted while air citywide, it's it's allowed. It would
But we're not restricting yet. It's already restricted itself. The the task force, when was that created?
About three weeks ago.
And then I know that we've been asking for it for a while and so, you know, is there, were you guys backed up? Why did it take so long to?
Yeah, we have the priorities, the cannabis task force, grants and other other things. So now we're getting to this item now.
Gabriel, I know had I had asked before is for like um uh how much or what is a concentration of S T Rs within a community? And I know a lot of the questions were always within the new communities that a lot of them have become short term rentals. And so do we have an idea of maybe kind of percentage wise is how much short term rentals are we seeing in some of these new developments?
Um, yeah, we do. And I know um when we were working on the T C C grant, um K D I provided a map of where the concentration of short term rental permits are. So we could bring that again back to the city council. I'd like to see that. Um, but one of the things that we are working on right now is preparing a study session for the planning commission because they asked for one, two, to be able to present this data too. So we're going to add on to the data that K D I prepared for the city. But uh, but that's definitely in the works.
When um when would we see the first phase start from this development?
Um, I'm I'm not a hundred percent sure, but at least what was talked about, I think at the planning commission, the applicant did talk about trying to break ground sometime in January. Uh, and so that may might have been some of the reason for some of the urgency by the commission.
Yeah. I mean, I'm thinking even if the first phase kicks off in January, we'd start seeing some of those homes, maybe the first phase done by the end of the year, maybe. So for the summer, some of the homes that are starting off that first and I have, you know, I've mentioned to my concern is that a lot of families, uh, young families and first time home buyers are not able to purchase some of these homes. And that's just the reality because they're driving the price of the of the houses too high. And so what's happening, what we see is we see three generations of families going into one home because they can't afford it. And it's not the healthiest situation because you have so many folks living in one home because they don't have anywhere else to go. And then you pack it on, you know, you have seniors and you have kiddos that are, you know, three years old. There's a lot of tension in these homes, a lot. And it's always been very difficult for me. And it's always been very difficult for me um to see. Some of these families have so many challenges as it is to go into a home, making sure that their credit's there. Saving for, you know, years on end. You know, many times they rent a home in someone's house to be able to save up. And so for me, you know, and I've been very clear about it. Is that um I do have a concern. That they're driving up the the rates, the prices of the houses, fifty thousand dollars over asking price. And they can't compete. That's just the reality. They can't compete. I don't see how one overlaps with the other. Um I would like to see the ordinance or at least a draft come through as soon as possible. Um I think, you know, if we would have been a little bit. Uh faster on it, I think we would have been addressing this stuff maybe at the same time. Um but it does not change that the concern obviously from the planning commission. I don't. I don't need to hear from them. It's pretty obvious that the reason is because the houses are being driven up so high. That it's not giving anyone an opportunity. Um when folks purchase their house, is it shared at that moment that short term rentals are not allowed?
Yeah, we're we're not disputing, you know, the thirty day uh rental is it's mainly the two year, but it sounds like, you know, Mayor Hernandez had a good solution. Um but we're more disputing the two year uh not not necessarily. For any reason, our our part, we just want to give the city. The ability to enforce something and not set this project. In a place where when the city does approve something. That, you know, this project kind of gets stuck with a two year limit. On on the project. Um and just for some of the timing, um we're looking to start sales in the second quarter of twenty twenty four, so. We'll break ground, you know, in January, but we won't start sales until later.
And then so if I'm reading what the plan commission is, is that they're saying two years after the last. Home, so meaning how many phases are in the development?
Uh there's twenty two phases. What was I'm sorry, the condition is.
So it's two years of the last. It's not of the of each phase. It's of the entire development. And so I do understand, I do agree with the concern there because sometimes these homes never get to the last phases and so. Basically, it would be for, you know, forever is what that condition says. And I do agree with I I do understand that side too. For me, two years after a phase would be complete would just be equally the same. I think by then that an um. City manager, you you said that there you would have a draft by then. Um so that would put it there. I. I do share that concern though, from what it says, the last house. Because if the phases are never complete and for the sake of this conversation, let's just say for whatever reason. The draft, the ordinance of the short term rentals is delayed even further than four or five months. That um or, you know. There's this concerns there, but I do share that. That concern that if. If that it's the last home. Of the twenty two phases. And so I would be open to adjusting that. It could be to two years. When the first phase is done or the second phase.
Or or subject to whatever the city council, the city council decides citywide. That's how I'm saying to add the condition. That that. Whatever it is, we don't want you to be. You know, kind of a a staff and island. Uh I think what we're saying is that it's kind of a like a me too provision and saying, hey. If everybody else gets to do this, will you too? And I think that's an easy way to address it because we do have some homework to do. And we are going to tackle that issue. And it only makes sense that whatever it is that we decide. At whatever percentage we decide. That your project be subject to it too. Um so I so I I think that condition works so. Of adding it, they're saying that, you know, keep the planning commission's deal and subject to whatever the city council approves in the future.
That but that condition is a bit unrealistic though. It is because it's it's saying for the entire for that. I mean, I I get what you're saying that it's. We can put it connected to the um ordinance, but it is an unrealistic since. It's the last home. I could understand if it was the last phase, so I could say, you know, four years.
So would you rather say that uh that they could go S T Rs first phase? S T R second phase or what are you trying to say that you want to see?
No, I'm very I'm very clear what I'm saying there. I'm very, very clear what I'm saying.
Understand.
I'm explaining it and I'll explain it again is that the condition of saying, hey. It's two years after the last house is built, so it for those that are, you know.
Rather see it soon.
Can I please finish? Thank you. So if we're looking at twenty two phases, twenty two phases. And each phase takes about what six months to nine months, maybe?
Six.
Six months, so twenty two phases. Uh we're looking at. Eleven years out. Right?
Yeah, uh. All right, like let's say four four months for each phase.
Okay, so but but still what?
Yeah, two thousand twenty eight build out is kind of what we projected.
Yeah, so what I am saying is that, I mean, it can be left as it is, but it is very. Unrealistic when we're seeing the very last house of the entire development when there's twenty two phases, is what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is that it could be four years after the first phase, which I think is a bit more realistic. Than the last house of the twenty two phases. However, if Gabriel, if you're saying that it's gonna come back, I just want to make sure that it's coming back. Before that first phase is done.
I can't guarantee it, but we are working expeditiously to move that. That's gonna be our top policy discussion moving forward. Uh we know we had the cannabis. Task force. Now we have the street vendor and this will be our next priority uh on it to work with.
So it sounds like what I mean, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. And you're saying that the condition that S T Rs only be allowed two years after the last. That the 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 last phase is too prohibitive. And that you would like to see S T Rs allowed on that project sooner is what I'm understanding you saying. Because this is what the 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 condition is to prevent S T Rs.
You know, Mayor, I'm getting really, really tired. I'm very tired of you constantly twisting my words. I'm not saying that we're here, we work together. We're I know I I. We're all here to. To work in the best interest of the community, but this here is getting tiresome. It is I. I just don't have time to explain things to you, but we're all here. Let's make sure that we work together in a way that's respectful and professional. I know that we are.
Create public policy and your recommendation is that. That from the beginning of the project, the four years. Uh after the first phase that S T Rs be allowed. And so. So you're saying after the first phase gets started. Which is going to be January next year and it's going to probably go four months. And so S T R should be allowed by twenty twenty eight is what you're saying.
Mayor, the didn't you say that the policy was coming back from the ordinance and they're connecting it to that?
Just it.
Isn't it connecting you to that?
I don't know.
Isn't it connecting to that?
What you're trying to.
Isn't it connecting to that? You said it very clear. We can watch the recording over and over. You said it multiple times and it's going to connect to that ordinance. Did you not say that?
Trying to understand.
Did you not say that?
Trying to understand your condition that you want to see.
Did you not say that it's going to connect to that ordinance? Yes, you did. Yes, you did. And so if it's connecting to the ordinance, Mayor, it's irrelevant what I have to say.
The language that was suggested to be amended on the C C R language was. At the end of the language that was proposed on the screen. It is to um unless it is superseded by whatever council approves in the future. And then the applicant did state that you were in agreement with that.
Uh yes.
Okay. Just to prove to provide some clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, we're we're in favor of the of putting that in the. Conditions, I. The only thing we were just, you know, gonna leave it up to the city for the two years. That was that was the only thing, but we agree with you on short term that. But we want to put it in the city's hands to have a special study session. So you know, kind of hash it out and figure out, you know, what the city's stance is for the long term and. So instead of putting it, you know, on this project. But. We are, you know, open to the two years of that's another route too, so. There's to any other comments, suggestions?
So I opened Airbnb. And I went to the Sevilla neighborhood and accounted. I can't count all of them, but there was about seventeen open Airbnbs at that time, but. They're not all just the single homes. There's, you know, people that live there that are families. There's one that. You know, has a nightly rate. And so, you know, I understand and I agree with Councilwoman Delgado on the portion of. You know, those two years after twenty twenty eight, so it'll be twenty thirty, the way the language of there's no ordinance by twenty twenty eight. And so then it restricts people that, you know, do um, you know. How long you would see that happening, right? So I think it's just really looking at. How fast? Doc Martin can work with his staff and get an actual ordinance. Uh because if, you know, it it delays and delays and then where do we really come from? Um that and looking at that because, you know, you've got to have that larger overlay of of everybody because you don't want to. Make one neighborhood then say, well, you you have. You get passed for this and. This other neighborhood, you know, across the street already has it the same developer. So how does that make it equitable, right? Where um? The also the equitable piece is having and ensuring we have a access to housing for people to stay in. The city or that want to come to the city and are not driven out with the price um. So that's where. You know, kind of stand with my comments on that and seeing. How do we make the ordinance in that language of the two years not staying till twenty thirty and bring it more, you know? Realistic if there was no.
So 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 help me understand the concern. Your concern is that. That the two years that's added from twenty twenty eight build out to twenty thirty. You're concerned that it that it's too prohibitive for families. Am I correct for for families to rent out their place?
Like you say, you ran out of room, right?
Room, so then so then what you would like to see. Is the condition be written in a way. That would allow short term home rentals sooner. Than the twenty thirty day.
Correct, but with that, then 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 with the comment that. City clerk mentioned. Right? So the language that was proposed.
I proposed it. Yeah, I propose.
Is that then? The I just want to make sure it supersedes because that's where my concern is that. That twenty thirty prohibits and makes it longer for someone that trying to make in some. Additional income for rising costs or to supplement their incomes for any specific scenario um. That's where my concern also lies, right? So that. Because some people utilize that extra room renting um. For, you know, travel nurses or anything that creates housing for other um people that come in sometimes are priced out because they can't afford an apartment because we don't have any. You know. Marquee rate apartments or. Can't do a six month lease because they're only here for three months. So that's kind of where. You know. My piece and you know, and that I can't see where that. That was coming. Sorry, excuse me. But that's kind of where I'm at with it.
So then propose some language as to the condition. You can strike the language and say that S T Rs are allowed on the first phase. And if that's what you all want to see, that's. That to allow S T Rs and go ahead. I mean, let's propose some language here on what it looks like.
Uh Ms. Mayor and council members um in Councilmember Figaro um. Doctor Figaro um to address that concern, a a potential option could be. Allowing short term rentals. Uh initially for owner occupied units. I'm not sure how we can enforce that with that word between owner occupied versus. Through a C C and R. It might be difficult, but.
I mean, it depends what the policy here of the council and we need to know what.
The 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 only way to address the yes, the the, yeah, you either strike the condition. Or you add a condition that says subject to the city council's ordinance. Well, you could, we can't write the problem we have right now as a city is that we have no ordinance. And so the fact that we have no ordinance is basically an open market. And so. I appreciate what the council, what the planning commission did here. Because they started the conversation. And it's a good conversation to start. Now, if what I'm hearing is that is that the intent of some of the council member or one council member in particular. I is to allow S T Rs only for uh owner occupied units. Well, then I think that needs to be considered. In the policy that we adopt. You know, if if the concern is, on the other hand, from another council member, that it's too prohibitive two years after the twen- after twenty twenty eight. Well, then maybe it's the other way that it that we allow S T Rs in general. You know, by say twenty twenty six. Or, you know, twenty twenty five, whatever it is that. The that the recommendation is, I I'd like to understand it. That's what I'm saying, but. But uh in terms of. Because the difference here is that because the 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 city. Is a assignee to the C C and R's. We're going to have the ability to enforce. Whereas in the other developments, the city's not a a a a or in the C C and R's, so we have no ability to enforce. That's the way I'm reading this is that the fact that the city now is going to be part of the C C and R's. We got an enforcement ability, a tool now. Even absent. The short term home rental. Agreement. So that's what I'm saying. And I think a way to handle this is that we just add the language. We just we just say that. Subject to whatever or that that the city's council's ordinance. Or supersedes whatever this condition is.
Yeah, the mayor went way too much into what we've already discussed. I mean, I think it's pretty simple. You know, the only thing that I was saying was that. Obviously, and it's just the truth. I mean, saying if then we would just be wiping out short term rentals altogether. The problem is that we haven't had that conversation in detail. And I know we've been asking. I know you guys are backed up, but we're in need of that conversation. It's just what it is. That's very clear. And so the only comment that I have made is that when we're looking at any development with twenty two phases. And you're looking at the last house that's built. I mean, there's twenty two phases and then what if a house, the last house isn't sold until five years after that? So it doesn't just look at two thousand thirty, it could be two thousand thirty five, whenever that very last house is purchased, correct? That's the way it's written. And so I'm just simply saying that it's a bit unrealistic. But if the it but since the ordinance was coming back. Regardless, that's why I'm asking if it was going to come back, then we can adopt that language, but. Just for the just for the sake of just to make sure is that what's on there is very, it's it's unrealistic because there is no specific date. It can be ten years. It can be twenty years. It's whenever that last house is built. And there are some homes, there are some families that do rent out a room. Um or anything like that to help them out with paying the rent or paying, you know, paying their their mortgage. That's understandable. But fifteen, twenty years is really, it's unrealistic is what it is. But. But anyway, so I mean, either way, if we're going to be looking at the ordinance itself, then we can go that route. I was simply saying that more realistic language would be that after the first phase is done, then you put four years on top of that. But it doesn't mean that that's concrete. It doesn't mean that what we're gonna be adding as a condition. Is not going to be modified in the future, right? I mean, if the if the language is to then adopt whatever we do. As an ordinance for the short term rentals, then that would be going back and modifying and amending the language. That we would have for for this development, what and not.
Uh unless you already have it in the condition of approval that your default to the updated ordinance.
Correct, so. What what I'm saying is that, I mean, even whatever we decide right now, it's not concrete as the mayor is making it seem. It's not concrete. It's not forever. It's based on whatever ordinance that we have come back. I was just putting language that's more realistic, but even that it's going to be modified. It's just the reality. So. At this point, I'm just really a bit frustrated. So this is as long as the ordinance comes back. And it comes back soon so that we can really start addressing what's going on in the city and what's been going on in the city for decades without properly addressing it. It's just time that we address it.
Well, it sounds like she agrees with my condition. So um. Is there a motion to approve this project?
And if the mayor was so concerned, he's born on eighteen years. He could have brought it. Forward a decade ago. It's just a reality.
It wasn't short term home rentals eighteen years ago.
Ten years ago, five years ago, six years ago, seven years ago.
I'm going to motion to approve Sevilla number two, project changes zone number twenty two dash zero five. Ten to track number thirty eight five five seven, condition use permit number three seven two. Architecture review number twenty three dash thirteen. Street names and environmental assessment number twenty two dash zero six, adding negotiate, negotiate, what was it, link? Way and then uh. Pyramid. Pyramid Ranch Pyramid Drive. Uh and this is a proposal to subdivide thirty nine acres into two hundred and four single family lots. With a minimum lot size of five thousand. A square feet. And then I will add the condition. Uh to Ron, what was what was that condition number?
Seventy five.
Condition number seventy five, that it will say comma. Read me the language.
Unless superseded by not being to the city Coachella short term rental ordinance.
Unless superseded by the city of Coachella's. Short short term home rental ordinance. And that would allow this project to be like any other project. Uh when we address S T Rs. Uh when we address STRs. Is is there a second?
Sorry, I had a question. Apologies, there's a lot of back and forth, though. My my questions might get a little bit lost, but I see a Jackson substation, so my question is about IID. Have you had a conversation with them recently? What's that been like? Just considering everything that we, you know, some of the issues we've had with some of our projects kind of being on standby because of energy.
Yes, IID has a will-served letter they issued. Um they will be taking power from the substation, and their estimate is almost a million dollars to run the line.
All right. Thank you for that.
So.
We need a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Check rule, council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Figaro.
Aye.
Council member Vikan.
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
Hi. We read the title to the record, ordered city Chelsea Coachella, promoting the zone twenty-two oh five, that promoted to add the PUD. Um to the existing a general commercial neighborhood zone, many of the official zoning map for property located south of Avenue fifty. North of Avenue fifty-one, west of Van Deere Street. The policy group, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any public comments?
I don't have any. If you have a visual on Zoom. I don't have a visual.
All right, with that, reports are request. See everybody at the state of the city and then have. Run with those more plus. And with that. City council comments? None, city managers' comments?
None.
Thank you, dear John.
Thank you.